Is that pickup truck something that would? It's old.
No. Okay.
All right. The act first. Also, good evening, everyone. 5:00 PM starting. To member this. And number two. Pled. Comments, Lonlake. Date. Just finished a couple. All we had. Pretty meeting. At. That in. Own property. Boulevard. Direction. Be to the. On that. Come back. And then. Topic. Just the. Hiring. Steps and. Direction on that. So. Staff and. Members. Number budget. Alized. By the. Views there. Uh. And just a couple of updates. With as far as community. It's Tuesday. Local mayor's. And. Kind of. Represents. Orno and. Area. She gave an update. And. There. A lot of interaction. Just kind of men. You and them. Alge. Career over the last year.
Our oral schools. And our oral schools are definitely doing a lot to make sure that we have a good district here, good education system for our. Our children, a lot going on there when it comes to their just continually working on their curriculums and making sure that they're injecting character into our students and. Teaching them how to kind of, you know, be adults one day and that sort of thing. And they're also expanding a lot into more programming and classes related to trades and the in trying to prepare students for a diverse set of careers in the future. So good to get updates about that and all that the oral school district is doing. So there's a couple of updates there. And then a reminder before I, in case I forget at the end of the meeting, just an upcoming event. I know Jeanette's been putting out information about this is next Tuesday, a week from today, there's a Lund Lake Waters Association and the Minnetonka Creek Watershed District are hosting an event at Orno City Hall from 5:00 PM to 7:30 PM. I think it's mostly sponsored by the Waters Association. And that looks to be a good event and some updates about what they've been up to and talking about, again, water quality issues, especially in Lund Lake itself. So I wanted to get that out there and then we'll do other updates too. I know you've been busy sending out lists or messages lately about other upcoming events. I think there's a Halloween event coming up as well, right? So. So a few updates there and what's been going on in Lund Lake and elsewhere. With that, we'll move on to item five, which is to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Thanks. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item five is a consent agenda. We have items A through F on the consent agenda this evening, including receiving a third quarter 2025 revenues and expenditures, and then giving conditional job offers to two new firefighters, Joseph McDonald and Brian Hinrichs, to the position of paid-on call firefighters at the Lund Lake Fire Department. So we appreciate those individuals for stepping forward to being to be firefighters in our community. Any questions from for staff about items on the consent agenda this evening? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item six, open correspondence. Open correspondence is an item on the on the agenda in which the public may address the city council. No formal action is taken by the city council and comments shall be limited to five minutes or less. And open correspondence comments may also be emailed to city staff by noon on the date of the meeting. Anyone wish to approach this evening for open correspondence? Nope. Okay. And then he submitted email correspondence. All right. Great. Moving right along then to item seven, regular business. We will start with item seven A. Approve furnace and air conditioning replacement proposal for City View Plumbing, HVAC and water conditioning for the Public Works Building and Lake Minnetoka Communications Commission office space. Public Works Director Dirks, you gonna kick this one off?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Council. Before you tonight, we have a quick request to consider a motion to approve the purchase of a air conditioning, actually, one air conditioning complete unit, heating and air, and an additional air unit for a furnace that was installed about eight years ago. The the AC unit never got caught up to that install back then, so we're requesting that at the same time. The LMCC is scheduled to move in November 1st, and I've been, for lack of better terms, discussing with former administrator for months on trying to come to a resolution on heating and air for this, and and here we are, two weeks before move-in, asking the council for approval of a heating and air unit for our new tenant, plus the air conditioning unit for upstairs, one of them upstairs. We submitted or solicited quotes from two local vendors, High Road Heating and Air, which is our direct neighbor to the west of the shop, and then, of course, everybody knows City View Plumbing and Heating in Long Lake. They both submitted bids. They were less than $100 from each other, with City View adding a 3.5% discount if we pay in advance or when install. So we're taking advantage of the 3.5% additional credit, which is roughly 900 bucks, and asking the council to give the blessing for City View Plumbing to install this at the public workshop. It's scheduled for the October 28th for install.
Nice. Soon.
So Sean, so the downstairs furnace and AC will be complete, and that's but you haven't had the luxury of air and heat?
Correct. We actually had to do some rework of ductwork upstairs, so they had air during the summer, so we'll put that back. And that'll make three out of the four units in the office parts functioning and essentially new. And we got one left upstairs, west unit, that's been red-tagged and will need to be replaced further down the road.
But what about your area? Like?
Brand-new last spring.
Okay.
So we're good. We made sure we took care of ourselves first.
I know the LMCC will be there paying us a rent. Is there a way to is there a way to factor that rent charge into into the purchase price of this, or is it just coming strictly from city funds?
Coming from city funds.
Okay.
Between that and the windows, their rent has been spent many times over.
Sure.
The rent that was agreed upon is actually going to be deposited within the general fund, so I mean, the revenue will still be reflected in the general fund, but like Sean mentioned, I we didn't take this repair in consideration when the rent was agreed upon.
Okay. When does the rent start?
It's I build them today for November 1st.
And they did put some money into, so we have been the beneficiaries of some, as you said.
Yeah, they spent about $80,000 remodeling that office space, and it looks very, very nice. I'm very, very jealous, envious, and any other adjective we can think of. It looks very nice.
Good.
Yeah. So we gotta be hospitable hosts and get them hooked up, so we're looking for a motion to approve that tonight.
I can make a motion to approve your furnace air conditioning replacements proposed proposal from City View HVAC water and conditioning, water conditioning for the public works building and LMCC office space.
All right, I'll second that.
I guess I should have, did you put the amount?
Yeah.
In the in the amount of?
Twenty-one thousand, zero, sixty-seven, and eighty-eight cents?
Correct.
Okay. Sounds good. So I seconded that. Any further discussion? All right.
Can I just ask, you know, we're putting in new HVAC, or we will be, I think, voting on putting new HVACs on the fire station. Is there any, you know, any? This is a not that contractor that we're likely going to be, I don't know if there's any, this is probably a different installation. Obviously, that's a rooftop.
It's a rooftop.
These are more of a residential unit.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Stuffed in a closet.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Item seven B, authorize staff to advertise for a full-time public works maintenance worker two position. Jeanette?
Thank you, Mayor. Really, Sean could take this one too, but I'm happy I brought it on your behalf, really. With the recent resignation of maintenance worker one at Farman, we do have an opening on our public works department right now, and rather than rehiring a maintenance worker one entry-level position to fill the opening.
Can you check your mic? Sorry, is your mic on?
There we go. Staff is recommending, oh goodness, that was a surprise. Staff is recommending that the city council consider authorization to staff to post for a maintenance worker two-level employee. That employee would some be someone who already has a minimum of two years' experience in the water and wastewater field, has already obtained their drinking water treatment and sanitary sewer collections licenses. So essentially, someone who comes in with a little more experience, who can immediately be a little more of, a little more of a support for our public works director, who is currently quite busy with two other entry-level candidates. It really does, you know, put a strain on accomplishing some essential functions there. So staff is just seeking a motion for authorization to approve a revised job description for the public works maintenance worker two position, and to authorize us to advertise and solicit applications for that position. The position's already in our salary pay plan. The position description, the reason we're asking you to approve that again tonight, has less to do with content and more to do with format. It is a first position description for us under a new format versus the old Times New Roman font format. We are implementing a new format and also added a little bit more language about for this particular position, especially given it should already have its water and sewer licensure. We want to make sure that we reflect that this individual should be able to have a little bit of math skills to accomplish the calculations that are necessary for some of the water reporting and and essential functions. So we just want to make sure that those abilities are reflected in the position description.
Great.
Any, I can make that motion unless there's discussion on it. I'll make a motion to approve the job description for the public works maintenance worker two position, revised October 15th, 2025, and authorize staff to authorize and solicit applications for the position.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Thanks, Jeanette and Sean on that one. All right, moving along to seven C's and Charlie, consider approval of roof replacement proposal for city hall.
Actually, there, I'd like to make a suggestion, given that we have members of the fire department here and Steve McDonald with ABDO, could we perhaps rearrange, let's bump E up to C, and maybe we can just.
Yeah.
Swap the two.
I like that. Let's do that. Okay. Good. So move on to item seven C, presentation by the Lund Lake Fire Relief Association requesting a fire pension benefit level change. And Mr. Steve McDonald, right?
Yes.
And I just want to kick this out a little bit, see, by just getting a little background information real quick from based on last time you were here, you were here back in in February, on February 4th, 2025, and you gave a really good presentation. I was looking at our meeting notes from that meeting earlier today and just refreshing my memory, and you brought the relief association brought together a proposal to do an increase. And back at that time, we had discussions about the service area change and the service area change that occurred in the city of Orno back starting in July 2024. And there were some questions about whether whether or not the 2% money or the state fire rate was impacted by that. And I think at the time, right, you confirmed that that amount had not been, those differences had not been factored in. And the council expressed overall concern, or not concern, appreciation for the fire department for bringing forward a proposal that we just wanted to make sure that the the numbers kind of added up based on that service level. And so I'll get off with that. Welcome back after since February. Welcome back again before council.
Time flies. I knew it was recently, but I didn't realize.
I was surprised too. I had no idea it was that long ago.
That's great. Thank you for the opportunity to get in front of you again. As you mentioned, the the 2% aid is a major factor in this, and it is updated for the just the Long Lake area now. I'll go over just the overview, some of the things that I'd need to cover in the beginning, if that's okay with council and mayor.
Of course.
The, yeah, our objective here is to project future assets and obligations and to determine whether a municipal benefit or municipal obligation would be required. Again, this is a projection, and it's based on management's estimates, things around interest rate, retirees, those kind of things are assumptions. So as you know, with any projection, things can change when you're looking out five years. So just a summary of some of the significant assumptions. We've started with asset balances at the end of '24, 1231 '24, but we updated projections for '25 based on, I think, last month's value. So when we use 5% to project the the overall asset increase, it's outperformed that through this point in the year. And we use the conservative 7%. So even though the funds have probably earned more than seven, just projecting what might happen in the next couple of months, 7% seemed conservative. We also assumed that the fund would return 5% each year for the from '26 to '23. Again, that's conservative relative to how the performance has been the last 10 years. So those are major calculations. I mean, this, the state aid is only considering the Long Lake area and based on the 25, 2025 information that comes from the state.
So could you, you've said a couple, can you just clarify that when you say Long Lake area, do you mean the Long Lake Fire Service Area, or do you mean just the city of Long Lake itself?
Current service, or the current.
Fire service area, okay.
Yep. And then we assume a 3.5% increase in that state aid from that point forward.
Okay.
Based on the calculations, there's there isn't an assumption of a voluntary contribution or required contribution with those interest rates. On the expenditure side, we worked with the department to determine who might retire in the next five years and factor that into the calculation, because obviously, if you have a large payout, that affects the asset balances. Administrative expenses, we assumed a 3% increase per year using 2024 as a base. And then the state statutes give us the formula on how we calculate future projections. So we're following the state statute system for calculating the any required municipal contribution. And then you're currently at $7,000 in benefit level. We've put together three scenarios. If you'd increase from 7,000 to 8,500 in 2026, 9,000 or 9,500. So again, each of those certainly help calculate a different funding level. I do make a note at the bottom of page four that, again, assuming a 5% positive increase each of the five years, there's no municipal contribution. Say that you'd have a negative return of 5%, that could trigger a municipal contribution at the $9,000 level and the $9,500 level. Again, that would be just a logical question that people would ask, what if we have a negative return? Just giving you some idea.
Is that, that's just a negative return in one year in that scenario?
Yes.
And so we make a contribution for that year? Okay.
Can I, can you back off of the, I mean, suppose the market did kind of take a turn for the worse, can you back off, although we approve it for, let's just say, example, 9K in 2027, if the market went south, could we kind of reduce that, or is that not possible?
I think once you approve the the benefit level, that's going to be the benefit level.
Okay, so you can't move it. Okay.
That's your obligation that you're committing to.
But you couldn't move it for the following year, or no? Okay. So the current, you made a good point. The current service area is changing. It's the commercial buildings, the 2%?
But these calculations include all of the 2% money adjustments, so these are.
But what about if Medina and that service area is taken out?
Right. I don't know if you're made aware of that, but it's, you know, it's looking, this would be for starting January 2026, which, mind you, it's gonna be a really all-new fire department, but most the city Medina most likely will not be continuing service with the new fire department. And and so that's, I think, about maybe 25% of the southern part of Medina. Do you foresee that that would impact your projections at all?
I would have to look at the market or the market value of what that might be. Do you have an idea of percentage?
Of market value, or which percentage?
If there's like a proxy could be the percent of the budget that Medina was relative to the current.
Oh, I see.
I mean, that'd be rough, but it wouldn't be exact.
Right. I think there were, I want to, I want to say, I don't know if the numbers are from, it's like 6% or so.
I was thinking around 6 as well.
Is it is the overall?
I think it's right around there.
Yeah, I think with these interest projections, you would be covered, that you would have sufficient return in assets. 6%.
About 200K for the 2% money a year, right?
Yeah.
So you're looking.
So it's, it's not going to be that big a.
It's not going to be huge.
Yeah, I don't think that that would change these numbers.
Because for the percentage, we've gone lower, because I'm looking at your graphs.
Yes.
Into the percentage is over 100 that it's funded, but you kind of want a little bit of cushion.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, if if we look at the 8,500 benefit level, you can see you're starting at 136%. So I think that's a trigger point to be looking at benefit increases the way you are. At the 8,500, the lowest it gets is 120%, which is still a healthy funding level. At 85, or 9,000, you go down to 114% with that assumption. And then at 9,500, the low that it gets to is 108%. Again, that's assuming a 5% return for each of those years.
So when you recommend funding levels, what do you feel comfortable with in terms of risk for percentage?
You know, just even if you if you got to 100%, that may not trigger municipal contribution, but I think a cushion is important. And again, the, from my point of view, anything over, well over 100% is going to be acceptable. You are, you do have increased risk if the rate of return is doesn't earn that 5%. You know, at 108%, you don't have a lot, but the municipal contribution is really triggered by the state aid plus the the interest return minus what's called normal cost. So the pension obligations next year minus the pension obligations this year is what your normal cost is. How much your obligation for pensions goes up. So that's subtracted from the revenue plus or minus your administrative expenses. So it's not necessarily that you that your funding that drives that. It's more your rate of return. That's the biggest variable in calculating municipal contribution. That's a lot of words. I understand that might not be super clear, but it's a fairly straightforward calculation.
And so can you predict the rate of return?
Past performance is no guarantee of future returns. Again, if you look at, I don't know, it's been 2021, we might have had a negative return. Somebody that's an investment person might be able to recall. Was it?
No, I mean, we got to talk in February, but yeah, so I mean, March of 2020 always sticks out in my head, but that's, that's a special. It was very painful for me. But yeah, I think to your point, I mean, the the reality is, I think you're pointing at the risk, right? And that's why you have the buffer, because fundamentally, the municipalities are, they're they're funding that part of the portfolio.
Yeah.
That's the insurance policy that does allow this thing to have that floor.
Yeah.
So the the portfolio you're looking at really is those two pieces. It's kind of this, I think of it as a 401K mutual fund looking thing, and then that insurance policy that the.
The cities, the. Yeah.
So that's why you you build that buffer into it. And we got to talk in February, if you remember, it was, we got to talk shop, but you know, fundamentally, that buffer should be a function of how volatile that that mutual fund piece is. Like, if you're in treasuries, the buffer can be smaller. As you get into more market exposed assets, that buffer should be bigger, but it's also, over time, history has shown that that performs better. So you kind of want to have a balance there.
So would you feel comfortable with a buffer that's slightly over 100%, like 110%?
I mean, I was, I, yeah, if you guys really want to put yourself to sleep, I spent all afternoon, I got a bunch of references here, the territorial references, and like the 110%. I mean, I saw one, you know, from the Netherlands, they required 125. Other places are, you know, 110. And and I think historically, we've kind of lived around that 110. I personally feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
And not that you should trust me. I'm just.
You have more historical data than I do in my head.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it really is, you want to have some sense of buffer in that.
Yeah.
But you don't, we're at 136 right now, so there, in my opinion, there needs to be an adjustment to the benefit. So.
But which one?
The question is, is what amount?
Yeah.
Is that, is that adjustment?
Steve, as you understand that we've, in this relief association with that 110% has been kind of that threshold that.
That's my recollection, right around there. And that feels like a safe number.
Can I ask a question about in expenditures, when they're talking about pensions paid, it says that these were assumed based on interviews with the members. I'm assuming that those are like, those are current interviews that were conducted?
Yeah.
Is that, do we, is that information public at all? Do we know?
Yeah, I can give you the, well, and I don't know if anybody wants to talk about what the projected.
Yeah, come on up, Mr. Canaby?
Uh, for this year, we took, oh, hi, I'm Ryan Diver, by the way. I'm Vice President of Relief Association. Uh, for this year, we took uh, all members that are currently over twenty years and are over fifty years of age. And then I also put myself in there to retire within the next four years at some point.
Okay.
So, and that would be before twenty years, so it would be, and I'm not, I won't be fifty by the time I retire. But so that would just be held in the pension fund until I remove the money.
So it's probably a pretty reasonable estimate when we were basing it on?
Yeah, this is probably worst case, this would be judging worst case scenario.
Okay.
Basically, the highest members that have the most amount of money to withdraw from the pension fund.
Okay.
That's what we projected and that would be taken out, so.
I think it was four or five retirements that you projected? I, I recall. Probably five.
Five.
Okay.
That's five in the next year or next five years?
Next five years, next five years. And these are these members that have over twenty years of service already too, that are able, that are over the age of fifty, that are able to withdraw their money.
Okay.
Reasonable assumption.
But there will be a few that jump as soon as we approve this, wouldn't there?
I, maybe, yes, no, maybe so, I, I don't know, I can't, yes, I would say probably.
So when you jump, just to clarify, like, so if you were to take your pension, what happens then? Do you start accruing years, you start from ground zero, can you go back and uh, work for the fire department and start a new pension? No?
Well, you can start a new, like, work for a new fire department, start a new pension there.
But you can't for...
I assume, I, I, I don't know, I haven't looked into that.
So Steve or Ryan, is, is there any, um, this five, five and five years is one thing, but if there is sort of a, I want to say mass excess or something on January first, you know, have you done any, ran the numbers to see how that would impact the, the funds then or?
Well, it'd be one to one, so you'd remove up pension, or the pension liability and the assets. So I, you know, that probably wouldn't have that great of an effect, you know, because they're, they're equal.
I, I know there is three or four of them that I used and said, had them projected leaving within the year, like once, from January one, at some point during that time. Just to give a worst case scenario with the thing, I had most of them leaving it. Like I know there are some people that aren't gonna leave, that I put in there that are gonna leave. Just so we, like, you know, it's just the, the worst thing, that just projects the worst case scenario that we could...
Okay, alright.
That was the plan.
And this, this would go into effect on January first?
Third, second, I don't think it's exactly the first, first...
Okay.
I don't know.
Effective for twenty twenty-six.
Effective twenty twenty-six, okay.
As long as we get the bylaws, this is all transparent, right? If we change the name, update the bylaws and all that?
Yeah, Steve, do you have any experience with that? I mean, so that, and we were talking about this a little bit yesterday with our um, Orno City Council colleagues that were negotiating a new joint powers agreement, and we talked to Rose a couple of days ago um, from the State Audit's office, and you know, she makes it seem like it's fairly seamless process, but that we have to, you know, obviously there have to be new bylaws and it become a new, new, new name and new department and that sort of thing. But if that's supposed to take effect on, on January first is the, is the goal, and I think it's gonna happen, but if, if somebody retires on January fifteenth and those kind of transition documents haven't been, you know, made officially and it worked out, is there any kind of issue, can you see any issues with that during this kind of interim period?
I don't know, you know, we, we go to Rose for those questions. The um, you know, because ultimately, they, they are blessing whatever's, whatever the situation is. We find that if we're really clear with the scenarios, their guidance has been pretty, pretty, or always solid. I, yeah, if things aren't certain, um, that create an issue, I, I guess I would want to hear from the state on how they're going to interpret that.
Would that change the, um, our, our liability? Would it increase, like, because we're liable to pick up the difference, but if the um, structure of the fire department changes or the JPA changes, would that include additional people taking the risk with us? Partners, so to speak, in the risk?
Correct, I think once, once everything's solidified, yeah, there'd be roughly a, you know, fifteen percent, eighty-five percent, you know, risk. Separate difference there was, I think what the plan is or the goal is, but just a little concerned about in the, in the interim, how that might, you know, let's say it takes longer, let's, at my, you know, the Relief Association, I think, has to up, approve these bylaws, the bylaw change, the new name, that'd be a little bit, a few different, you know, word changes here and there. And so if they don't do that until, you know, their association doesn't approve it till February fifteenth or something, you know, what, what kind of issues or liability is there in that, you know, forty-five day window? And the, and that example is a concern that I have, um, but...
I, I don't have an answer off the top of my head on that one. I certainly could look into it and, and see what our recommendation would be. It's a unique situation that we don't run into.
Yeah, yeah, I, personally, I don't want to do anything to, to hold it up or anything, I think it's, you know, it makes sense to, to move forward. It just, I know that's um, a concern I have, I don't know if you've had, anybody else have had, looked into that any further to uh, to drill down on that or?
I think it's, as, as the meeting was last night, I think the plan is, we notice the bylaw changes.
Correct, we've, we've, um, the date has been, so I've, I've worked um, a little bit with Rose on making sure that this transition is, is as seamless as possible. Um, and her and I are in continued conversations as we go through this. At last night's meeting, we talked about, it would be brought to the members to vote on the amended bylaws in December. I believe it was the December eighth meeting. Sorry, gentlemen.
Over.
Um, so in December, early December. Um, and that will fulfill our notice period.
December eighth.
Then we have a sixteenth meeting, right?
I don't know about that. So...
Second to the sixteenth.
Yes, and then the, our council will be approving their vote on December sixteenth. So bylaws should be um, approved with the new name before the end of the year. If that answers your question.
Yeah, at least the timeline allows for, assuming that...
Correct.
The Association approves them and that sort of thing and...
So I'm kind of new to this, um, but if we were to um, vote for the funding, increased in funding levels, and then the um, we go through the name change and the, let's just say structural change of the um, Relief Association in terms of partners, is it better to wait so that, would they be voting on it as well, or is that some decision we're making unilaterally before um, the bylaws change and there's more partners? Because it sounds like um, it's not, the Relief Association isn't just going to be the Long Lake Relief Association, as I understand, but it's going to include additional partners, am I correct about that?
At least one additional partner.
Yeah, okay. So is the, is the timing, you know, I mean, I think we should give a, there needs to be an increase, but um, is the timing right now?
As I think about this, I think, are, are we making prudent decisions that our partner city is gonna say is prudent?
Yeah.
That's, and, and they are our partner in this. So I, I, you know, as we make decisions, as long as we're going in with that.
Yeah.
Our future partners can't be upset, in my opinion. So I'm comfortable doing an increase now, and then if we do have a bylaw, if there is something with the bylaws that doesn't get done, well then, it's January, one, it's still Long Lake Fire Department, that we would still make the same decisions, in my opinion.
And you can come back and visit it again and increase it even more, once the um, the formation of the uh, new structure is...
Yes, but you don't, you don't want to go through this process every six months either, right?
No, because it gets expensive.
Yeah, well, it's, I think it's, what, point? It was like five grand for, so it's, it's just over point one percent of the fund's assets need to get paid to do this analysis by, is that right?
Yeah, we pay out the special funds.
Yeah, so it's, it's like five grand or so, so yeah, so whatever, you're paying fifteen bips every time you do this. Sorry, point one five percent.
Okay. Yeah, I think they are deserving of an increase, obviously, and uh, and it, but to your point, we need to be prudent and I think because of this transition, I think that a hundred and ten percent is important to me uh, to maintain. So that would put me in that, the nine thousand level, but um, can I, can I make a suggestion?
Sure. If, I mean, if you just look at the three scenarios, the, the percentages are roughly linear. So it's a, for every five hundred bucks, it's a percent, right? So if, if we were to go to ninety-two hundred, I think that takes us to a hundred and ten percent on twenty twenty-six.
Sounds right.
To go to ninety-two hundred?
I, I, I would be comfortable with the ninety-two hundred, and I think our partner cities in the future would say, we're being prudent and the hour of actuarial sleeper documents I read today would, I think also agree that that's a reasonable prudent level. But that's my opinion.
Okay. I think that seems fair based on what it, but um, yeah, what Steve had said and consistently, I spoke to Mr. Shaughnessy earlier today too, and his um, was a lot of history with the Relief Association, he kind of mentions a hundred and ten percent is a very consistent number that's been used over time, and um, there's some industry kind of standards out there that Mike had mentioned that's, are followed as well, so. Uh, yeah, does anyone, I, I, you want to make a motion?
I just wanted to check my math here real quick. Yep. Uh, I'll make a motion, it's Long Lake Fire Department Relief. This is structured as a, as a motion here.
Structured as a motion on page seventy-two.
Oh, all right, all right, all right, I got it, sorry, 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 sorry. I'll make a motion to increase the pension benefit level to ninety-two hundred per year of service.
Can I ask you one other question too? I know that this is bringing up another monkey wrench, um, but it's not gonna go into effect until two thousand twenty, uh, twenty twenty-six? Is that negoti- can you do, do you need that timeline to kind of, um? Do you need...
Yeah, what you approve at the beginning of the year.
Okay, okay. So you need, there's a grace period that you have to do it, okay? I just was wondering if that was something that is also a variable that you could switch?
No.
Okay.
That's the state statute.
Okay, okay. Then I second the motion.
Oh, okay, good point. Do we need to modify the motion in case the name of the fire department changes? We say Long Lake Fire Department or Shoreland, whatever is relevant?
Whichever is relevant at the time, as of January.
Well, I mean, it's currently the Long Lake Fire Relief Department Relief Association, right?
Now it gets passed and then, okay, done.
I think the agreements take care of the transition.
Okay, perfect.
Succession interest.
Alright, so motion and a second, any further questions or discussion?
So um, just to add the uncertainty of this transition um, that's happening, I don't know, is there any, is there any, I, I didn't hear like a definitive answer on how smooth this is gonna be, um, that we're making a decision now that is going to apply to Orno and Long Lake from January first, hopefully. I, I guess I don't know what, how that works, and so, I mean, I'm supportive of this, but I don't want to, I, I'm just wondering, is there anything that we're not thinking about that could come back and like, oh man, why'd you guys make that decision? I, I don't know, you, you've kind of addressed this or thought about this more than most of us, so... Yeah, I mean, as, as I look at this, is, um, you know, if, if our current Long Lake Fire Department contract was going till twenty thirty, I would still make the same motion. And that scenario versus having the JPA happen, that to me, they, they seem like they get reduced to an equivalent um, action now. And then we gotta bust tail to make sure we get the JPA.
So was this presented at, at a Relief Association meeting um, at all that Orno was at?
No, I mean, we just talked about, about it last night, but...
There was a meeting that the Relief Association has with its members, and they all voted unanimously to go to ninety-five hundred. Is it, is that out there?
Yeah, the Orno, like, just to be clear, Orno is not a member of the Board of, of the Relief Association Board currently, they're a member of the Fire Advisory Board, which is different than the Relief Association.
Yeah, to that point, the bylaws will need to be changed to that as well. Because right now, city admin and council and fire chief are three people that go to the board meetings in, in Long Lake people, and that needs to go to the JPA members. So I shouldn't be there in the future, and the JPA should be appointing, appointing those.
And Ri- Ri- Ryan, to John's point, did anybody from the Relief Association that you know have had that conversation with Rose, like, hey, we got this new fire department starting on January first, is this, is this increase gonna create an issue?
We don't know, there, uh, we're trying to figure out where the two percent money has gone for right now, and right now, I'm talking to the Minnesota Department of Revenue, waiting to hear back from them, uh, where that additional money went to.
And that's the six month twenty twenty-four money, forty grand?
That's the six month, no, that's the, that, the six, yeah, the six month twenty twenty-four, and hopefully, if this all gets signed, we should all get the funds for...
That's like forty thousand-ish, right?
Twenty-five, forty, it ended up being about forty thousand dollars.
So how does that, how does that factor into Steve's estimates here, is that...
That money's already been taken out.
So these are conservative?
These are conservative numbers.
Okay.
We already planned, we planned for the first year a forty thousand dollar reduction with the plan, adding that forty thousand dollars back in in the additional years, assuming that we are going to have, the department will come together once again.
Oh, so you'll recover that forty thousand?
Whatever, we'll recover that forty thousand dollars. But we did not add the additional forty thousand dollars lost in the first year. We just assumed that was gone.
Oh, okay, and you may get it back or?
We may, I don't know, we're trying to figure that out.
Uh, just another question, what kind of investments do you have your funds in?
We invest in the SBI, which is a...
State Board Investment.
Investments, yeah. It's just a, it's a blended fund managed by the state of Minnesota that has, uh, ever since we've gone to that, it's been worked out for us really well.
Nice. Yeah, as far as the two percent money, kind of my understa- we, we talked about this with, you know, Orno back in the spring, and I think my understanding was that it was, neither, neither city was gonna be able to claim that, receive that two percent money for twenty twenty-four because um, it was sort of split in six months, you had to serve it for, you had to serve that area for an entire year.
Entire calendar year.
Calendar year.
It couldn't be from like, you know, July first to July first. That clock again started on January one of twenty twenty-five. And then that would go to January one of twenty twenty-six, and then assuming that Orno controlled all that area at that time, they would get that two percent money sent there. Now, I'm assuming the JPA comes together, that two percent money is still gonna go to them, it's just gonna come to the new entity that's both coming together.
Right. Yeah, I think that's correct, it sounds fam- familiar.
So, if you get this signed.
Right, right.
It's gonna be a lot easier.
Yes, yep, and that's, yeah, just a little update with all of, all of you here, that um, we met with Councilmember Diver, and I met with Mary Two, and I'm Councilmember Persian last night, back in the office there, in the conference room, and, and we really down to everything being, I think, figured out, um, just, we're waiting to hear back from Orno's attorney on some lease language and, and otherwise, we're, we're hopeful that Orno can approve the joint powers agreement next Monday. And we're calling a special session of our council for next Thursday, the thirtieth, to approve the J, JPA and lease uh, agreement, so. That is the plan as of now, and unless some kind of, you know, wrench gets thrown in there somewhere, hopefully it'll happen and it'll be effective on January first, so making a lot of progress. But yeah, this Relief Association is, is kind of a thing that was kind of thrown at the last minute, we, we actually, that's right, I'm sorry, we do have to work in some language in the JPA here at the last minute to kind of cover some things that Rose suggested be covered in the joint powers agreement to kind of address some things and who's, where the liability is and the bylaw change and things like that, so. So making progress there. Alright, motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Alright, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good, good work, thanks for coming back with additional information, Steve.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Alright, move ahead. Okay, so we'll move, we'll go back to item seven C, consider approval of a roof replacement proposal for City Hall. Jeanette.
Thank you, Mayor.
They all just leave, they don't stay for more.
Talked about the rooftop units next, maybe that would perk their interest, but...
Apparently those were a little less exciting. Um, so um, Mayor and Council, this is a subject that came up. We, we had budgeted um, fifty thousand dollars in um, building, maintenance and repairs for improvements, anticipating improvements to... building, maintenance, and repairs for improvements, anticipating improvements to City Hall in twenty five to include a potential re-roof project. Um, we've had um, former Administrator Weskey had been working with one vendor um to explore a possible insurance claim um for some damages to that really wasn't successful, and also had started the process of obtaining some quotes. Um, with his departure and the end of the budget year coming quickly. Um, we decided to get the ball rolling um if we wanted to move forward with that as a budgeted item this year and obtain a lot more quotes. So I've been contact with in in contact with a number of roofers. Um, the most uh the most favorable proposal we received is actually from a local vendor right here, All Around Property Preservation of Long Lake, on Wayzata Boulevard. So I just want to mention, you know, the roof is a good twenty-three years old. Um, I have been provided with roof reports that um do show it showing its age. There's, you know, some bumps and bruising for hail damage. We've got some exposed now and lifting, actually lifting nail heads out of the roof. Um, shingles beginning to uplift as they're losing their adhesive, some minor tearing in locations, um, damage to the ridge vents. Separate from that, it's hard to notice at nights, um, but uh I actually thought there's an area right in the entryway where the metal flaking, the white flaking is coming off the fascia in the entryway of City Hall. Originally, I was sort of uh looking at proposals to just replace maybe just the entryway section, but after taking a little tour around the building, I discovered the flake flaking extends further than I thought. Um, I'm not necessarily recommending anything there, but we do have a proposal for full replacement of the roof and the soffit and fascia as an option.
Is it metal fascia or a soffit, too? So you can't just paint it?
No, no, you know, and I think whatever coating is on there right now is just starting to flake off with age, so.
Can I ask you a question? So I'll start, I just kind of, maybe I'm not seeing it, but it says the soffits and fascia, it's two thousand dollars, but here.
That was just the one section.
Okay, I just, that's what I wanted to know. The other ones, it seemed like it was pretty far.
Quote been for all of it, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would have been a higher number, but that was that was a little less diligence in walking around the building, and again, the soffit fascia replacement is provided as an option. It, none of this is anything we need to do now exactly, I mean.
Well, you, yeah.
It it is in the budget year. It would not be in the budget, it would not be a budgeted expense for next year. I I have been obtaining a lot of quotes from responsible vendors. I feel fairly confident I am not going to get a better quote than I received for asphalt shingles. I do want to mention that, you know, um, although in in the dream world, uh, for me, like, you know, metal roofs can be beautiful, and so I did actually ask um the lowest favorable quote we received here, um, can you just give me an idea what that would do to this? And he basically confirmed that we'd be looking at upwards of a hundred thousand to do a standing steam roof and or standing seam roof, and as he said, it would look great, but very expensive. Thank you. So the roof material proposed is, you know, your standard.
Thirty-year shingles or?
Your standard thirty-year shingle, although with the Owens Corning Corning Duration um shingles, which is what we have a couple samples here today, just for fun to take a look at. These are, you know, kind of beat-up samples that are taken site to site, so they don't look exactly like any one would look like, but it gives you some color ideas to look at. Um, the uh, they are actually a preferred vendor for Owens Corning, so they have the ability to register us for, actually, I think it's a fifty-year manufacturer warranty, because they have a preferred vendor status with Owens Corning.
This price is for the Timberline GAF Timberline?
Or the Owens Corning, either one.
And what we have on there now, isn't that a thirty-year shingle?
Yep.
But we're twenty-three years, so apparently that's false advertising.
Right, right, right.
Yep, I I would say there's, I don't know if you're familiar with zippering, but that's what you're kind of starting to see up there. Is you'll see there's areas where the tabs are kind of starting to separate and slide a little bit. So you're starting to get this like zippering effect.
Didn't we have some repair on the the ridge?
Public Works did a little emergency repair to cover a hole.
To what?
Still a piece about this wall missing that.
Yes.
Is exposed.
Yes.
That's crazy.
And or is there leaks in them? Huh?
There there is some cracking in the boots around some of the pipes that are up there, so we're aware that there could be the possibility of some damage to some decking, but leaks that extend beyond that, we have no detect, we haven't detected. No, no.
And unfortunately, I think with the location of the missing piece, um, when there are leaks, we're not going to notice them right away because of the location, it will affect City Hall here, or the chamber, yeah, it'll be right above, yep.
About Charlie?
Yes, so we'll know it.
Just look for the water spots.
I crawled up on that roof, and it's in pretty tough shape.
Okay.
Are the are those Timberline shingles?
Yeah.
Are they architectural shingles or more?
Similar to the little one there as far as architectural, I guess.
Yeah, architectural, but solid green. Kind of a green-black, but the green is kind of starting to flake off more and more a little bit.
So would you do the fascia at the same time?
That's more of a cosmetic thing, probably do that next year or
That that the fascia doesn't go in under the shingles?
I can't answer that right now.
Are there gutters on this building?
No.
No.
Because I, if it's metal fascia, it might tuck up under.
Right, right.
I do think there's probably a labor cost savings that you receive from doing them at the same time, but again, that's it. I have them quoted as an option.
Did you, did they quote that? With that in mind, that it would be done at the same time?
Yes. Yes, the quote was intending to do the entire job.
And the soffits bad, too? I mean, if it's underneath, like, it's not getting sun, right?
Um, I don't, it, there are areas that it's in good shape and other areas that it's just showing a little age, you know, nothing looks quite so smooth anymore.
What is, what are we a budget for?
Uh, twelve thousand for a full soffit and fascia replacement.
But fifty, you said fifty?
Nothing for the.
Oh, budgeted, sorry. Fifty thousand was budgeted in total.
Thousand remaining.
And so that's for?
In the um City Hall facility.
So if we don't use that money, that'll just kind of go into next year?
It it just goes into the general fund cash.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't have a line item, it just goes into the cash balance.
How are we doing on this year's?
Fifty percent?
What do you mean?
Um.
I mean, overall, is there, are we over on other things, like when we're buying H uh HVAC for the Public Works building?
And I was actually going to mention to you, too, the HVAC, we have nine thousand four hundred remaining, so we will be slightly over budget. Unfortunately, that was an emergency purchase that I think we should have planned a little bit better.
I don't disagree that we need.
Um, right now, in the general.
If we don't do it, it's going to happen.
Yes. So the general fund, um, we're at sixty-three, at the end of September, we were at sixty-three percent of expenses. So in my opinion, um, we're doing pretty good for the end of September, because you would kind of expect around a seventy-five percent. And that also does include, I'd like to point out, I enter all of our annual charges, I enter all those up in usually mid-year, if there's any annual um adjustments or transfers, those get taken care of right away. Um, so we're at sixty-three percent. I do expect legal fees will be higher in the next couple of months, but other than that, I don't foresee anything else um significant that I would warn council to be aware of. Um, also with this, we are, there will be a cost savings in staffing in both Public Works and City Hall for twenty twenty five. Um, now, we did have to do, we, as you're aware, we have some unused vacation payouts. So it's not as large of a um staffing savings as you might think, because there are, there are payouts when an employee leaves for unused vacation time, but nevertheless, we will still be operating under budget, so we're currently at sixty-three point two percent.
So and you said we have forty-nine thousand?
Forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars remaining in that, on that, in that budget line item, and actually, for City Hall Facilities Department as of September thirtieth, we were only at twenty percent of the budget. Um, because we've saved money in a lot of other places, so.
Clean, main fighting machine.
Roof or roof and soffit? Or roof, soffit, fascia?
Um, thirty-one eight for the roof replacement only, forty-three eight for roof, soffit, and fascia.
Another twelve thousand, yeah, I'll do it all.
So when we don't have gutters, does that kind of, do the soffits deteriorate faster without gutters?
Well, you wouldn't see the so, or the, no, the so, it's the fascia that's deteriorating. If there was gutters, then they would be covering up the fascia, but um.
This is a whole clean new look is what it represents on the roof.
Can we fix up some of the entryway, too, then, when we're like the straightening up that thing that's the pollards or whatever we call them, or pollards? I know, but can you, can you, can you jack it up, like?
We can try.
I have one item under other business to bring up, actually, that's related to more front entry improvements.
Well, do we have budget for that?
We'll talk about that.
We'll talk about that under other business.
It won't, it won't, it won't. I would make sure to let you know if it was.
So I, coming into tonight, I was going to say, I, we could wait another year or six months or whatever to do this, but now I'm kind of leaning towards doing it, but especially if we have budget for it, although then, you, you know, we went over on the HVAC, but then there's maybe something left over here that, I don't know, I guess you work things.
When we have fire department, higher fire department expenses next year, and just just the way the budget is working out, it'll be harder to budget for something like this in the next couple of years than it is right now. That's, that's the honest assessment. Um.
Wouldn't it make sense so to have gutters at least over like the doors or something, like, don't you have?
We could certainly look at that in a future year.
Yeah, you can put those up anytime.
And and, yeah, exactly, we can put those up anytime and, you know, determine where where would be the most effective place to do that. Um, I I do think a City Hall um roofline uh and overall refresh is in order.
Would they paint the, would they, how would they paint match this, the um fascia?
It it's all white.
It's it's already.
It's.
It's.
It's white?
No, it was painted metal, whatever the color it is, I don't know.
But you have to pick what color then, if it's stick with the green or black or?
No, actually, that's that's the board underneath the fascia, but the fascia itself is actually white.
Oh, okay.
What color is it now? I didn't even know.
White.
Oh, well, you can do different colors. I mean, if it's a metal fascia, they have pre-painted brown, black.
If there was an option for colors, we would probably do a black.
Well, it's.
Blended with the.
What, so what color would the shingles be?
Well, there's a couple.
Would be that weathered wood or whatever, that's what I have.
We are, we've been leaning towards something more in a gray family to be a little more complimentary to everything that's around us. Um, we can't do anything with the stucco and the red brick, they are what they are.
And that's a, would that go with the stucco and the red brick?
Um, there's a couple options there that I I do think I do think a couple of them, we went outside and stood and stared at them in the sunlight and.
Meet the village guy, like? Who, yeah.
I wish she probably checks this.
Who's gonna pick the color?
Everyone is welcome if you would like, that's.
Maybe put it on your website to see if people have an idea.
I, that might be a little more than we're up for, but uh, we could certainly prop them up here after the meeting and get the council's input, because that's a very comparable color palette to what's outside.
There we go.
They didn't offer any other color color than white on the fascia?
No, we didn't even discuss it.
Because there has to be other colors.
I, I understand.
I mean, maybe the white is the correct one, but I mean, there are other colors.
I, there are, um.
Painted aluminum, right? I mean, it's.
I think we could look into it if they have it.
Yeah, it's it's like electro.
Plated?
Or something. Yeah, powder coated.
We certainly look into it. We didn't we didn't ask about it. We were focused on obtaining the quote.
They weren't sure for it.
But if, if we're going to go forward with it, I, this is for the next twenty-three years, apparently.
Twenty-three years?
If it's a thirty-year shingle, I guess we'll be doing it again in twenty-three years.
Kind of wish they'd asked me about the green, but, you know.
So could we go, what would they do if, um, we said we wanted to collect on the warranty, would they redo the whole thing?
Manufacturer's warranty, so that's.
Chances are, there's no more manufacturer.
Right, exactly, no, that's, you know.
To be, yeah.
What you're looking for is, you know, product defect, not, not, you know, years of.
Natural wear and tear.
Yes, exactly.
All right, I'm going to do a complete a complete about-face, and I'll make a motion to approve a pricing proposal for a full City Hall roof, soffit, and fascia replacement from All Around Property Preservation of Long Lake, Minnesota, in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars, and to authorize staff to approve additional incidental costs associated with any necessary roof decking repairs.
Nice, I'll second that. All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can I ask one question? When could they get to it?
Very soon.
Okay.
Very soon. They said they could have it because they're local and right in town. They said uh, this job would likely be able to be something that they can squeeze in due to proximity, so.
Pre-frost.
Yeah, exactly, they he was anticipating they could, if the weather holds and conditions stay favorable, it could be done before December or before mid-December, so.
That's great. All right, motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor, I opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks for your work on that. Glad that we can move forward on that after the twenty-three-year-old roof.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. All right, keep this theme going here. Now let's do item seven D, approve removing and replacing five HVAC rooftop units or RTUs at Fire Station One.
And I will be taking this one today, Mr. Mayor. Um, tonight I will be presenting this on behalf of Chief Highland. He has gathered three quotes for replacing all five rooftop HVAC RTU units at Station One. It is the understanding of both um Chief Highland and myself that this would be run through the current fire contract. Now, exactly how that will work, um, given a possible percentage change in twenty twenty-six, we will be, him and I, Adam and I have discussed looking at that further, but this would be run through the current fire contract. So the the three bids that um Chief Highland has received, he received one bid from New Century Service for a hundred and three thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. This vendor is well-known to the fire department. It has done a lot of work at the fire department. Um, and they're, he's very familiar with the facility itself. The second bid that was obtained by Chief Highland was for ninety-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-five. Um, this, this vendor comes highly recommended um by the Orno Public Works Department. And the third bid that was received was from a Modern Heating and Air for seventy-seven thousand dollars. The reason that this bid was substantially less was because the contractor offered to complete job essentially at cost, because on an annual basis, he performs one to two pro bono jobs a year. Um, I, at at the time that Chief Highland prepared this report, he did not have a recommendation, which is why the motion is to approve a bid from, and it is blank, for the removal and replacement of five HVAC units at the, on the roof of Station One in an amount not to exceed. As I mentioned, um, Chief Highland did not make a recommendation at the time, and was actually looking to have that that information decided by council. However, after talking with Adam Edwards in Orno um, and Mayor Minor, we have actually asked the chief to make a recommendation, just so we knew what his thoughts were, and he sent me the following email. He said, I would recommend New Century Service to remove and replace five heating and air conditioning units, RTUs. They have done considerable amount of work at both stations and are very familiar with our facilities. NCS has always been fair and stands by their work." So based on that email, Chief Highland is recommending the first bid.
So what about Ditter, because they said that's highly recommended by Orano Public Works, and I'm not to like.
No, um, that is a fair question. In an email that Chief Highland sent to Adam Edwards, he did also recommend to Orano proceeding with New Century. He said, in an email to Adam Edwards, he said, "Regarding the quotes for Fire Station One HVAC units, I recommend proceeding with New Century Service. While Modern Heating and Air submitted the lowest bid and a firefighter from our team has had positive experience with them, New Century has service, has constantly performed a significant amount of work at both stations consistently."
Who wrote this, Adam?
This is from Chief Highland to Adam, for their meeting, for their approval. So, he said, "New Century has consistently performed a significant amount of work at both stations. I trust their professionalism and the quality of their work, and they have always treated us well. The Ditter recommendation came from DJ and he spoke highly of them as well." That is all the information I got.
Any response?
I was prepared, yes.
Nice.
So, Adam Edwards responded to that email saying, "Mike, thanks for the rundown. We, Orano, will use New Century cost of a hundred and three nine eighty-three thirty-five to base the calculations for our council's action on. If we use an adjusted twenty-twenty-five Orano allocation cost of eighty-five percent, the Orano portion would be eighty-eight thousand four hundred. This is the dollar amount we will ask for authorization from council."
Okay, so they, we approve this, then they have to approve it at their council meeting?
Correct, because it will be run through the fire contract.
Yeah, so they, we both need to approve it. I, I have a question about warranties. Uh, Ditter says ten-year heat exchanger, five-year compressor. Is New Century? You know, we, we, we have to have, uh, to compare, we have to know what warranties each is offering. And then also there is exclusions, like, uh, Modern Heating and Air says exclusions, power and control wiring, service repair and warranty of existing equipment, plumbing. And I don't know what is excluded. Yeah, so when it says power and control wiring excluded from Modern Heating and Air, I don't see that on the New Century Service listed exclusions.
And I believe that was one of the concerns that came up when Chief Highland was making the recommendation, because Adam Edwards had also asked about additional costs such as electrical and plumbing that were not listed in their quote, but may, um, maybe costs that are incurred. And so I, I believe that, given those, given those possibilities is one of the reasons that Chief Highland decided not to go with them.
I don't see any warranty in that one, do you?
Huh?
I'm looking for warranties on the other ones, I'm just not seeing.
I do, oh, um, if you look at the bottom bullet point, it says one-year parts and labor warranty.
Yeah, on New Century.
On New Century.
Yeah, it's on New Century.
And I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know, um, if there would be a warranty on the Modern Heating.
What it says, NCS would like to include a free of charge PM for twenty-twenty-six if PM agreement for twenty-twenty-seven is signed at this time.
I believe, I believe that was mentioned before, is that was a maintenance agreement.
Preventive maintenance.
Preventive maintenance.
Oh, oh, I see, okay. Do we have a preventative maintenance agreement now with anybody?
Not that I'm aware of. But there could be a, I don't know if I would have been in a situation where I've been, would have been informed of that yet.
I'd be curious what their cost would be, um, for twenty-twenty-seven, if we could get it free for twenty-twenty-six. Is that just, would that just be preventative maintenance on the HVAC units, or would it be on anything that we have?
I believe just the HVAC units. But I can get clarification on that.
So in our motion, do we say the, the vendor, and then do we?
The not to exceed amount.
Then the not to exceed amount.
Is it not to exceed this dollar amount or the remaining amount?
I think in this situation, if, if you're, if you're going to decide to go with Chief Highland's recommendation, then it would be appropriate to use.
The dollar amount.
The dollar amount he provided. The only reason that we had originally left, other than not knowing the vendor, um, I think if, if your intention was to go with Modern Heating and Air, I think it would be, it would be safe to adjust the amount a little bit in case there were added costs that we weren't aware of.
What were you saying, what were you talking about the remaining amount?
Well, Orano said they're gonna put a motion for.
Oh, for the percentages?
Yeah.
I think in the way that we, we word that.
So if we just do this number, we'll pay the remainder?
Typically, what we have always done is the action exactly as you see it before you.
Correct. To be purchased, and, and I think it would be appropriate to, to, we could add in there, and correct me if I'm wrong, to say, to be purchased under the.
You certainly can.
Existing fire contract.
So, does that mean we're going to bill Medina for their part?
That is, um, that is not, we will be talking about that a little bit. I have had a conversation with Medina myself, as far as, um, process in the next couple of months and how things will work out, but I, I think that, that might be a decision that is made. I was gonna add it to our fire advisory board meeting that we could discuss as leaders and how that would be allocated.
It did, it did come up at our last fire advisory.
It did.
I can't remember how she said.
Yeah, I mean, they weren't eager to participate.
But.
But we do have a contract.
My, my, but, and my thought was, in this situation, if you recall, I was actually just reading the minutes from the last fire advisory board meeting, and Chief Highland brought to our attention that there were two units that currently needed to be replaced. And at that time is when we, when we were starting to discuss the idea if it would be cost beneficial to do all five at the same time versus just the two.
So we could.
And so, and that, in that situation, I do think that two is, um, fair and reasonable.
And those two were probably in need of replacement.
Correct, there, we were in a situation where we, we were gonna have to make a decision this year about replacing two. Um, the fact that we've chosen to do five is a little bit different, so I think it would be appropriate to, I, I think we could, um, talk at the next fire advisory morning, board meeting about how to properly allocate.
Yeah, just do the math.
Correct, and given that it's not such a defining amount, I don't think that it should affect our vote with whether, how, whether or not we decide to allocate with Medina, I don't think that should affect our vote at all, because.
No, it shouldn't.
So is this a recent, um, um, quote? Because it says the date is seven fifteen twenty-twenty-five, it expired eight fourteen twenty-twenty-five, and I'm referring to the New Century Service quote?
I believe this was the first, the first quote that was received by Chief Highland in preparation for the last fire advisory board meeting.
Oh, okay. So I don't know if anything's changed, maybe the numbers have changed, but maybe it hasn't. Is it still good?
I, I believe if, it is just our responsibility to approve what was provided.
Okay.
That's all I can.
Yeah. But maybe not to exceed the quoted amount of.
Correct, this is all that we were given by Chief Highland.
Councilman Feldman, go ahead.
I wanna make this motion, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the bid from New Century Service for the removal replacement of five HVAC units on the roof of the Fire Station One in the amount not to exceed one oh three ninety-eight, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
All right.
Unless somebody else wants to do that.
No, I did really good at that, that's great. All right, motion and second, some, my only comment and thought is, was, um, in, in the event that Orano, I'm assuming that they'll go with Chief Highland's recommendation, but, but perhaps if they were to go with the lower, the low bid or something like that, is that gonna impact what we're doing here tonight? Would, would we have to re-approve that then, do you believe, or?
Yeah, we'd just bring it back in front of you.
Okay.
Well, if they base their approval on the lower amount and they take eighty-five percent of that, now they're saying, "We're gonna pay this much," but are we committed then still to go with New Century Service at that point? Because we've made this motion, um, should we still add to this motion, you know?
Not exceed, but give flexibility to the.
If approved by Orano.
That, that Orano is going to.
Subject to approval by the Orano City Council.
Yeah.
Okay, subject to approval by the Orano City Council.
Motion as amended.
Because then if they don't approve it, but approve the other one, then we can come back and say, okay, then we'll go with the other one or something.
Absolutely, okay.
All right, uh, motion and a second, a friendly amendment was made there. Um, all those in favor? I opposed, motion carries unanimously. Great. Okay, so their new switch up here, is that, bring us to the end of item regular business?
Item, uh.
Schedule the new.
And I would like to offer to actually, um, I received some slight language amendment here. Essentially, we'd like to ask the council to schedule a special city council meeting for Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, beginning at five o'clock, um, for, um, certain purposes related to all things fire department, which I'm, I'd be happy to read aloud a motion here in just a second from our attorney, but, uh, I, I do want to just, um, you know, assuming that date is going to work for everyone, we've already confirmed our city attorney's availability, particularly for the closed session, pending everyone's availability. Um, I do want to just remind, um, the council that special meetings are for the business established for the special meeting only, so there wouldn't be other business items. So if, if there's no objections to the date, I do have a suggested slightly lengthy motion to read.
Any, does that work for the vast majority here? And this vote isn't gonna require a four-fist vote, correct? It would just be a majority vote?
A simple majority, yeah.
Yeah.
She said, uh, October thirtieth, five P M?
Yes.
Yep.
Is that good with, it's good?
Thursday. All right, so we passed that threshold, that's good.
Yes. With that, um, we have a recommended motion language here from our city attorney. Essentially, staff is recommending the council make a motion to schedule a special city council meeting on Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, beginning at five P M for the purpose of conducting a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D dot O five subdivision three B under attorney-client privilege to discuss open litigation related to the fire services contract and to meet and consider approval of the joint powers agreement for the shoreline fire department, station leases, settlement agreement, contract extension and related agreements.
So that'll be, and, oh, there'll be an open portion when we will.
Correct.
Approve that, so first closed session and?
Correct, closed session followed by the other business.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion and second, and then just to make sure, you went through a lot there, I just wanna make sure, was one of those items to appoint, um, a joint powers agreement board members?
Um, that was not recommended on this list, but I think that would follow with the immediately next regular council meeting.
Oh, I don't think it has to be at the same, okay, did, was that a miss on? I think it was a miss on John's part.
Okay.
It's very late this afternoon that he sent an email, um, suggesting that be one of the items to include on.
That was not in the, in the email to me, okay, yep, we can add that.
So add that to my motion.
Yes, thank you.
To include appointment of board members.
Board members.
Yes, okay.
And there'll be two board members appointed.
Are they from the council?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Council members, yeah, I was thinking about that, started thinking about your level of interest in that and commitment to everything, and that'll be a good topic for that meeting on Thursday, next Thursday, and then Orano Plan, just to be clear, Orano Plan's doing all of those things on Monday, this coming, this coming Monday as well, to keep these.
What if they are not able to, to do that, sorry, I have to sneeze. Well, does that change our plan then?
If they are not able to do what?
Well, let's say.
Um, under the advice of our attorney, we do want our, uh, meeting to be following theirs, particularly as it relates to the settlement agreement. So we want, we want to be sure our meeting follows theirs.
No, no, I know that, but, but if, if for some reason they're not able to get everything approved, leases and, and, uh.
Would we just cancel the special?
I, we would, uh, visit with our city attorney on the appropriate process to handle that.
Bless you.
On October thirty.
Worst-case scenario, we adjourn, we open the meeting simply to clo, uh, to cancel it if we had to, so.
Okay. Uh, all right, and I know, yeah, I'm just, Mr. Edwards is already floating around some ideas about potential first meeting dates for the new, um, fire board, so.
It has to meet within a certain number of.
Because it's correct, the joint powers agreement requires meet within a certain amount of time, so. Looking at, you know, early in November for that, potentially the, as early as the fourth. More to come on that.
Did we vote on?
That's election day.
No, we've not, so. Yeah, I thought same thing.
Got it.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, move on to eight other business then. So you want to get, start with you, Councilman newcomer?
Uh, no.
We can end with you if you want, we can go that way.
Nothing, thank you.
Feldman, what's your dynamic?
Uh, regarding the lake, and I know that you've been meeting and walking around, um, I may be shunned too about, um, with the water set district, and, and I know that you, they have that meeting on the twenty-eighth, which I hope, uh, people will attend. I plan to come, but, um, my concern is that, you know, their, their plans are long-term plans, and they, and they're gonna talk again about plans they talked about, you know, six, seven, eight years ago that never materialized. And I would, uh, which, and I think long-term planning is, is great and important and all of that, but I think there, there should be some, um, shorter-term, uh, solutions that should be considered. I mentioned this before, alum treatments, and, and I've been talking to some other people that are knowledgeable on alum treatments and, and, um, you know, there is a cost associated with that, depending on who you ask, you know, could, I thought it was around a hundred thousand, you know, the, some people are saying for our lake, it could be more than that, but then there are lakes that have done this and gotten, um, grants through their water set districts to do it. I don't know if the many Haah Creek water set districts would be interested in, in putting money towards an alum treatment, because they might just see it as a Band-Aid, um, and, you know, where they are looking at, like, until we get those TMDLs, you know, lowered that are going into the lake where, um, um, you know, we, we don't, they might not wanna consider that. But then my answer to that would be that we already have a lot of the TMDLs in the lake that aren't going anywhere, and that's what we need to do the alum treatment for, so if we did an alum treatment. And they are, they are proven to be effective if they're done right, and, um, but there's, you know, it's a lot of money. And, uh, so we'd have to see if there's grants available or, and, you know, what the city's participations would be between Orano and Lung Lake and maybe the Lung Lake, maybe the, the Lakeshore residents, you know, and then maybe fundraisers. I mean, there's a lot of different ways, uh, to, to, to do that, but, and not that I'm ready to say we should do it, but I think we should, um, consider that when we're having these conversations with, um, you know, parties that are, that are interested in improving lake quality, so.
I don't know exactly how it would work, but as Mandy alluded to earlier, uh, we, I, I was just observing that on the, um, list of allowable expenditures for charitable gambling funds, there's an item for donations to a five oh one C three. There's not anything that says we can, that would enable us to conduct, um, water quality improvements directly out of that fund. However, Lung Lake Waters Association is a five oh one C three.
Right.
So I am going to send an email to, uh, to the gambling board to see if I can get an answer just on that, but that is nice to know, because we do have, um, we, we do have funds in that fund, um.
So those are funds that come from, like, pull tabs?
Exactly, pull tab revenue.
And it's restricted money, but this.
Yes, there is a very specific list of allowable uses.
And this is not? And this is not the, the, the money that the organizations are committed to spending in your community? These are just straight money that comes to the city, but it's restricted.
Right.
And what kind of, I mean, are we talking?
It, it's very restricted, actually.
Are we talking tens of thousands that are in there, or are we talking?
Uh, thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, thirty-three thousand dollars. Now, uh, that's the thing, it's, it's a great source for replacing any, um, non-budgeted playground equipment that falls into disrepair. I mean, replacing the merry-go-round was actually a surprisingly big ticket item there, so it, it is great for that. But, um, now that we have more sources of charitable gambling revenue.
Yeah, we have another one, right?
Yes, exactly, so, and that'll kick off in about a month, so, yeah. I'll be, I'll send an email to gambling control board and just try to get a sense of whether a donation to the, the Waters Association as a five oh one C three has a unique ability to fundraise that a city does not, so.
Well, I just know, I've been, uh, reading about, uh, some lakes in Minnesota that have done the alum treatment that were on the impaired waters list, and it, it took them off the impaired, impaired waters list. I, I can't remember what the grade went from, you know, it was maybe a D to, I don't know, B or something like that, but, um, so it does make a difference.
Is Long Lake on the impaired list?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, and this one, it was on like, it should have been on the extremely impaired.
Correct.
Cause I know it was impaired, but I didn't know if it was officially on the list.
Very much so.
Yeah. So, but the, but a lot of Twin Cities lakes are, it's not like, you know.
Exploring funding opportunities and creative funding mechanisms will be on our list of things to do.
All right, anything else, John?
No, it's.
So on that note with, I, I do plan on going to that event next Tuesday at the Orno City Council chambers. Were, were we posting a.
Yep.
Quorum notice for that, okay, and others think they might attend that?
Yeah.
All right, great, great. All right, and then, um, quick question for Shauna, the, I think the usual is, they're really far behind, but have you heard any updates or any staff on Midco and how they're doing with their installations, if they're going to be done this year, or?
Uh, biggest hiccup on the whole thing is utility locating. They cannot find people to work to locate utilities ahead of the board.
Ever since the incident Martha Lane.
Waiting weeks to get, uh, locates.
What about Vanguard?
Interesting, okay.
The ones that, the ones that.
Private utility locating companies, and they just can't seem to get it right.
Uh, okay.
I did, uh, ask for a locate the parking lot here to stick up a sign. By law, you're supposed to have everything located within forty-eight hours, and it took over a week.
Wow, wow.
Land us to go, so.
Interesting.
Very challenging.
All right.
I'd be very surprised if they're done by the end of December. They still have everything essentially from Brown Road going east on the south side of the highway yet to do yet, so.
Yeah.
They're moving at snail's pace trying to get to Brown Road even, so. Then we got all the many subs coming in behind to tie all the service lines into the mains, so it's just one vicious cycle after the other.
I think they still need to build like a building of some sort over behind the old Orno Public Works Building to, ties it all together.
I'm associating that to a service facility. Uh, I'm going to be meeting with Midco, I've got some issues with their infrastructure in the right way as far as the lakes to, um, potentially be in the way of snowplows. So we're going to have discussions on that. If they do get hit by snowplows, how are they going to fix them?
So, look, look, it seems to be below grade or.
Well, it's a little bit.
Yeah, right, right. All right, thank you for the update on that. I think that's it for me.
Nothing.
Amanda?
Counsel, I have a few, um, updates that I wanted to let you know of, know of. The first, I know that we've talked in the past about L G A and how as a small city, we are not receiving, um, local government aid. Um, and looking at some information, actually, Jeanette and I both found that we are in fact, as, as a small city, receiving, um, what's called Small Cities Assistance Program. I just wanted to make sure that I cleared, cleared that up. Annually, right now, we are receiving money from the Department of Transportation for, to be used for streets. Um, the amount for twenty twenty-six that is expected to be received from the Small Cities Assistance is going to be thirteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand. That amount will be deposited directly into our pavement management fund. So I just wanted to clear up any, um, misinformation that we might have had about not receiving any, any assistance when in fact we are receiving this.
Is that state or?
State.
Yes, Midco.
State.
Is the first year we're receiving?
It is not. It is not, we've received it.
That's which funds that's gone through the past?
It's been slowly growing, um, the.
It, and it looks like when we've created the pavement management fund, one year it went there, one year it went into one oh one, um.
What are, what are we talking about? I'm sorry.
No, it's a Small Cities Assistance Program, so annually, we have been receiving money for at least the last three years, it looked like.
Don't quote me on that, it could be two. Um, two to three years, we were receiving money around ten thousand, around ten thousand dollars. Um, and that money is supposed to be allocated to street improvements of small cities. So we were receiving that, as I mentioned, in twenty twenty-six, we're receiving almost fourteen thousand dollars.
But we don't know where that went in previous years?
Well, I do know where, yes, there, what, one year it went into the pavement management fund, and one year it went into the general fund. I only looked.
This is similar for, for, uh, reimbursement, I guess.
A reimbursement for county aid. Um, I don't, and so this was just one that had come up when we were looking at opportunities for streets, and so I did, we confirmed, um, and actually, I moved the money that we received in twenty twenty-five out of one oh one, and I did put it into, into the pavement management fund so that we knew that it was being spent appropriately.
It needs to be used for pavement management or seal coating.
Yeah, it's much easier to have.
That's where it needs to be.
Right.
That money will in the future always be deposited into the pavement management fund so that it's used appropriately. Um, the other thing that I wanted to inform counsel about is we did receive our awarded settlement, um, for, as it related to fire, that money that we received was deposited directly into the fire capital fund as, um, we, we had brought that fund negative with the purchase of the last vehicle. So I went, I did deposit that money, um, into that fund because that is where I, I thought was the intention, that was counsel's intention.
My only other thought was the, you know, civil legal expenses to reimburse those, um.
Correct, um, and my, my way of thinking, and we, and counsel can direct me differently, the legal, the legal expenses were paid out of the general fund in twenty twenty-four. Um, and obviously, as we mentioned, the general fund, it did, it did help with cash and so forth. But we did not, when we purchased the vehicle, we purchased it out of the fire capital fund, our fire capital fund. And so we would either have to do a transfer out of one oh one, which we still may need to for the small difference, to help with that shortfall, or I, I do recall at the last meeting, we were talking about having some of this, that we received this, that we would try to offset that hundred, we were negative a hundred and nine thousand in that fire capital fund. And so I, I was understanding that the council was thinking that this money would help offset that. If that's not the case, no problem, I can, I can have it deposited into refunds and reimbursements into the general fund, and that's fine too, whatever you prefer.
I'm going to trust your judgment on it, and just, um, they're both necessary, just wasn't sure if they had like a deficit, I don't think we have a deficit in the civil. Cause we'll be, and we'll be receiving, I'm su- we're not done receiving, um, bills from our outside law firm as well, so there'll be additional expenses there.
The civil costs, um, are department separated, but not fund separated. Um, and so right now, they are coming out of the general fund. And this is kind of where we were talking about, um, each of the departments, year to year, sometimes pay for the shortfalls of the other departments, but at the end of the day, they come out of the general fund. Whereas when we purchased the vehicle, we, we took that out of our fire capital and went negative in our fire capital. So either way, we would have to bring that hole at some point. Um, we, we went negative a hundred and nine thousand dollars, and so, like I said, we can, I can easily deposit, transfer this deposit into the general fund. I just thought, knowing that it had a, this is exactly where that money went, to offset that vehicle purch- a portion of vehicle purchases appropriate. Cause they were both fire-related, so. And I'll be verifying that with our auditors too, that my, my thought process is appropriate.
Sure, all right, and, and then to confirm, I think the, the check we received was from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, correct?
Correct, it was, yes.
All right, thank you, anything else? Jeanette?
I do have one thing.
Oh, you do, yeah.
So, kind of related, but a little unrelated to the roofing project we put in front of you earlier this evening. Um, I have been doing some work on, um, I, I received notification that there is a twenty twenty-five polling place accessibility grant. And, um, it has a couple lists of first priorities and second priorities, but, um, things that fall in line with the first priority include, um, capital improvements to improve accessibility to polling places. Um, and also, um, electronic door opener, E D A compliant systems. Um, we have a situation here, um, these doors are very heavy. We actually receive complaints about them very regularly. Um, I, I don't know how many times particularly senior citizens have noted to me just how heavy those doors are. And, um, we also have an issue with the outer doors, we do have an E D A system on the front entry doors, but it, um, because we have an issue, uh, with the front entry doors having that bit of a key eating problem and some handle-related things in there, the E D A system actually can't be, um, enabled to operate those front doors. So I, um, reached out to the Secretary of State's office and, um, posed the question to them about whether a, um, complete door entry, uh, replacement, uh, might be an eligible project for the application. And based on what I described, they said it fell in line with their first priorities. So I've been working on preparing, and it's very, it's about ready for submission pending this one thing. Um, a, uh, quote for new city hall front and rear doors. Um, that would be, um, metal framed, primarily glass, so taking out a lot of the weight. Um, changing up the A D A enabling system in the outer doors to a different type of functionality, um, that will get them back up and working and improve ease of use, and there won't be quite so much trying to finagle things with allen wrenches. Um, everything will be rekeyed. Um, this proposal, eh, would not include, um, a, uh, remote access system, but that could be added at a later date. Those systems run about thirty-five hundred to four thousand for a set of doors. And they also are typically tied to subscription fees for cloud-based software for, um, you know, uh, authorizing users, et cetera. Um, so that, that would be something that would be an option for a later date, but this would just be door replacement only. And I really do believe that reducing the weight of the doors and, um, putting in, you know, new electronics there in those front entry doors, uh, to get the system back up and working again will improve accessibility for, you know, a, a good chunk of our voting population, especially early voters, is senior citizens and it, or folks who have some level of impairment, who want to come in and vote when they're going to have lots of time and no lines and less audience. And this is exactly what would enable them to do so just a little bit more independently. We actually had to help a guy in a wheelchair get in the front doors the other day, so that, that was a great example. Um, it would be great for daily traffic as well. So I'd like to ask the council tonight, um, the total quote for this project is, um, between twenty-four and twenty-five thousand dollars. The maximum grant award, if we were found to be eligible for that, um, would be up to twenty thousand dollars. Which means we, if we received the maximum award, we could be in a position to replace all of these store, entry doors, outer and inner, um, at a cost of between four and five grand out of pocket for the city, and it's a great opportunity. And if the council is supportive of that, that expense would likely fall under next year's budget. Not this year's budget, because they're not making a decision on the grant awards until November, December. So, um, as of the time that I'd contacted them a few weeks ago and began aggressively working on this, they hadn't received any applications yet. So I'm kind of hoping I'm hitting it in an off year, and there won't be a ton of competition. If the council is supportive of that, I'd like to pass a letter down the line and request your signature to both support my application and authorize me to submit one.
Great.
Send it down.
Okay.
Does that mean we can take this, the paper sign off the door that says use other door?
Yes, that would be the idea, yes. And our, our thought is that these.
The four thousand?
Yes, so for next year, I do have a twenty thousand dollar budget in there for city hall repairs, A D A doors, et cetera.
Okay.
You'll see your names there if you don't mind just signing above your name.
Well, it's worth.
Now, I do want to mention that long game, we would change the colors of the doors, we're probably leaning towards black with stainless hardware.
Is it going to match the new soffit and?
Well, that's where we're going, so, and then, um, I think within that twenty thousand dollars allocated for next year, I think we're going to try to get quotes from commercial painters to do all the exterior green trim. I, and, and just see how far we can go and start completing that refresh, at least of city hall's exterior, and then we'll work on the interior.
You know, can I say, is it, is it okay if outside doors don't match the inside doors? I'm not a decorator, so I don't know the answer to that.
This is going to be a phased approach, I think.
We're not loving that idea, but.
What do you mean? Oh, I thought you were just talking about inside doors and outside.
Oh, no.
Oh, in here.
Yes, we're talking about.
These are brown, and, um, the outside would be black. Is that apropos?
I don't think so.
I think.
The only thing that we thought might be, if we were going to do exterior quotes, is above the current doors, there's, um, window ledges that are.
Yep.
Brown, and then the door frames right now are brown, so if we were going to do an exterior paint under this budget, we would just change it to black. We're trying to do something more neutral, um, and timeless, and that's why we were thinking black.
Leaning towards the black charcoal gray family.
Somewhat dated?
I know, it's extremely dated, and so we're trying.
I like char- charcoal or black or.
That's the family we're leaning towards, and using maybe both charcoal and gray, depending.
Right.
Or, I'm sorry, charcoal and black, depending on the item, so that's, that's where we're leaning.
We're trying to make it look, look cleaner and less, yes, freshened up. Um, we were, we were joking that if we were able to get a painter, we'll tell him the budget and tell him paint, keep painting.
And don't start.
Black until you run out of money, and then stop.
Then he and the paintbrush.
Somebody just, at that point, hand me the paintbrush, so this is.
I'll paint.
Well, I thank you for your support of that, and I will tell you, I have been working with a vendor for a while on this and exploring a lot of different options, reusing the A D A system that we have, doing a whole new one, all sorts of stuff, I think we've arrived at the best solution. And, um, with this, this was the last piece I needed to submit our application tomorrow in time for the October thirty-one deadline.
Good luck.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting the work into that.
Crossing fingers.
You know, you could do black with the, and mix it with the brown, cause black and brown go together, don't they?
I think you should do a council subcommittee with, you see, kind of do color palettes and that kind of thing, you guys can do that, right, be great. With the, with the door, I saw your, yeah, thanks for that stuff earlier, my only thought is just to, um, future-proof it, like the most.
Yes.
My previous employer, I know the most expensive part of any card reader project is the wiring, and so if, like, if any wiring would, could be run out to, I don't know, is there going to be a standalone A D A kind of pull, like, push button, or do you think the, the A D A push button will be on the side of?
We're going to actually be reusing the electronics over there and just refreshing paddles. Um, the, the new stuff is actually going to be inside the.
Wireless?
What's that? No, it is not, nope. Um, it'll be, it's hard to explain, I can't, without having a photo in front of me to do it, but when you're looking at the door hardware picture, like one of those push doors, you know, the hardware's actually inside here, you never see it, and that, that's where the opener.
Hmm.
Enabler is.
Hmm, okay.
So it's tucked inside, a thing that you never see. So it's tucked inside, a thing that you never see in the, in the.
And then it says like automatic door or something on there, so.
The paddles that you see right now, that, it, we actually have stainless paddles out now, out there now with the blue um, you know, wheelchair symbol.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna refresh the paddles because those have, you know, taken some hail beatings over the years, but.
I'll have to look at those again.
Pretty standard.
Good, nice work, all right, that'd be great to get some great funding for that. And then all this talk reminded me of something I, I glanced over, which is the Highway twelve gate, the Conrad one twelve, Highway twelve gate, emergency access gate between um the two, the county road and the state road, and so um updates there is that are reached out to our state representative, our s- uh Representative Myers, our state senator, Anne Johnson Stewart. They're both very actively trying to find a solution with MINDOT for that, to get um, first choice is, is MINDOT funding, second choice is maybe a county partnership there, explaining that there is an agreement that alludes to Long Lake maintaining this, but this lives literally between a state highway and a county road, doesn't involve a city street. It's provide public safety for emergency response for people that are really just not even coming to Long Lake, they're kinda coming from, you know, western Hennepin County and that sort of thing, so. Got an email update this morning and they're very actively trying to solve this and, and so is the Wise Ed Mayor, it's very, thanks to the Wise Ed Mayor who's, I mean, I'm being driven by their police chief, is also very, very heavily involved in trying to advocate this with, along with us, so.
Yeah, and what I find interesting is like if you live in Long Lake, you get off the road before or on east or west, you, you never use that section of the road.
Right.
Seems a little nuts that those are the people who should pay for this thing, between a state and the county highway, it's like.
Yeah, I think I've driven that thing like three times in my, you know, thirty years in this community, whatever, so.
It's bizarre, it's very bizarre.
Right, right, so fingers crossed, and right now I see it's open and fingers crossed that nobody, you know, comes out of the rooster or something, drives on it. Um, but we wanna get that fixed so that we can address that issue, so thanks for staying up with that as well.
It is a quick shortcut.
Have you tried it, have you taken it?
That's the, that's the deer dri- entrance ramp to the.
Right. Health club or whatever, wow. Yeah, make some money.
There's a fundraising idea, right?
There's the pavement management fund.
All the way back there, yeah, yeah, yep.
Okay, so upcoming meetings, we have a meeting next, or the, we've talked about the water, Long Lake Water Association event on next Tuesday. And then we'll have a special meeting on Thursday, October thirtieth. And followed by back to our, another unusual meeting, which is Monday, November third, we, which we rescheduled from the fourth. So just keep, keep tabs on all these unique uh event dates coming up here next.
Oh, that's good too.
Yes. All right, last call for other business.
Let me just say that the Orno uh girls swim and dive team won the uh state championship crew team at the University of Minnesota last Saturday.
Wow.
Yeah, it's awesome.
For the second year in a row.
Dive account on the team, so that's, that's awesome, congratulations.
Wow.
And the boys football team have a number one seed, so they play on Saturday. They had to buy the first week, so.
So is that um section five?
Uh, well, class four A, but it's, yeah, it's the section playoffs and, which will lead the state, so hopefully. But they'll play, they'll play mound, Westanka, or Providence, who are playing tonight, so they'll play the winners of that game.
Have you sized up the competition?
We beat both teams by quite a bit, so, but I don't wanna jinx it.
Great, that was a great update.
Congratulations.
Yeah. All right, if there's some objection during the meeting, by general consent, you're not, meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-eight P M.